Anthony, could you just take, uh...
Roll, please.
Yep. Mrs. Feis?
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Here.
Mrs. Janicek?
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy?
Here.
Mr. McGregor?
Here.
Mr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Scouso?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Christiansen?
Here.
Nine present. Thank you. So, welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda, site logic. You gonna give us an update?
Yep. Presentation. Good evening, everyone. I believe it is. There we go. Great. All right. So, we're here as a follow-up to, a couple of weeks ago, we gave an update as it related to the Phase Two project at Independence Middle School. And at that time, we spoke that we were starting to receive bids, and we spent the last week and a half or so scoping out, making sure that the bids were legitimate, and working with those contractors. Met with the administration last week. And we're here tonight to give you an update. Attention tonight is to speak on the scope of the work, kind of re-familiarize you with the scope of the work. Talk about the phasing plan, because that has changed a bit since we're in a different timeframe now, and then ultimately, the cost. But I did want to speak upfront about the cost and the fact that we're pleased to report that we are within the budget constraints for the rebid of Phase Two. That was really encouraging, considering this market that we're in and the volatility that we've had. So, we had a lot of bidder participation, so we're definitely pleased to report that. And we'll get to the, those numbers in a moment. As far as the scope of the work is concerned, wanted to start off, just kind of in generalities, that this, this part of Phase Two includes everything except, obviously, the areas that we've completed in Phase One, and we'll show you a graphic of that in a moment. And then the auditorium, music wings, lower-level locker rooms, and gymnasium areas. Those have been deferred. We are addressing the fire alarm throughout all of these areas to make sure that we have the, the, um, the safety of the students and the faculty. So, this is a floor plan that identifies the various areas and how they relate to the various phases that we have. The yellow area is, of course, Phase One that has been recently completed. The gray area is what is in this current Phase Two. And then the orange area depicts the areas, as I mentioned, that have been deferred, the auditorium and the gymnasium and music areas. What we tried to do here was, just kind of highlight, based on the various divisions of work, what is going to be happening in Phase Two. And to really try to have everyone understand that it is a similar renovation in, in scope and quality that you had in Phase One. So, the paint and, and the flooring and all of that is all going to be, basically, it's all going to be seamless as, as you walk through it. The site work, a couple of things to point out. The school plaza is going to be redone, new canopy. We're also installing new bollards at the main entrance from a, a security standpoint as well. This is a, a rendering of the new entrance to, to the school.
Yeah, just to point out, when you guys walk up to the main entrance, all will look brand-new. So, that whole area will, I think, will be, or even re-coat the existing EFS just to make it look new as well.
Asbestos abatement, of course, as we did in Phase One, we'll be removing the asbestos abatement from those areas. Demolition, just some, some highlights there. Obviously, we're going to be taking that, that existing canopy, removing that, putting the new canopy on, and then removal of the concrete ramp, ramp structure as well. Concrete, we've got some ramps. We have a ramp at the Learning Support 204 and the corridor between the cafeteria and the auditorium, which is identified here in section. On the masonry side, we are going to be increasing the window openings, as we did in Phase One, and some of the masonry column enclosures at the new entrance, in addition to some of the standard masonry work that we'll be working on. And again, some photographs of, or some drawings of, of what, what that is going to entail as it relates to the, the masonry work. Structural steel, there'll be steel for the new canopy, also, the new stairs and landings and railings in Stair Tower Three that we'll be working on as well. Roofing, one of the highlights there is that there will be a new metal roof over the sixth grade wing and, and above the cafeteria. So, as Rochelle said, as you, as you pull in, everything is going to look new, including, including the roofing system. And this is, again, some drawings identifying those areas that are shaded, that identify where the, where the roof is. We have metal panels, and then just above that, we have, as Rochelle indicated, IFIS, which is kind of like a drive-it system. And the same here. You've got the panels, and then just above that is, is the IFIS system.
And the roof color will match what your new windows are in that sixth-grade area.
Doors, frames, and hardware, not a lot of exciting things to report there. We're just, you know, obviously, replacing those. Aluminum storefront, windows, and skylights. We are including some security glass throughout, as requested by the district, so that's consistent with what the direction has been. Rochelle, you want to take one?
Yeah, so this is just a sample of the windows that were replaced in the sixth-grade wing, showing you what they look like, and the patching of the IFIS, and then the new windows. And you can see on the picture on the right, you'll see a little bit of a patch. That is what we're going to cover over, so you cannot see that patch. So, like, again, that will all be new.
Drywall, again. Acoustic panels, clouds in the library. We're going to be working in the library area, sprucing that up a bit, and also working on the canopy and the soffit framing, as well as all of the drywall partitions and, and ceilings throughout. Flooring, we're continuing that same, what we call luxury vinyl tile throughout the classrooms, corridors, offices. You saw the patterns. We've got some photographs of that. That theme will continue throughout the building. Ceramic porcelain tile, we'll have that throughout the, the spaces as well. You can see in the, the restroom here, that'll continue with any of the, the areas of Phase Two. Painting, one thing to note here, as we talked before, we'll be cleaning and staining the exterior brick, as, as noted throughout, throughout the drawings. Finishes, as you can see, again, I saw some of these photographs at the last update, but just, you know, that's going to continue throughout all of the Phase Two areas. Marker boards, tack boards throughout, display cases, all of those miscellaneous items will continue that theme through. Lockers, lockers throughout the corridors will continue as well, as they were in Phase One. In this phase, we are addressing the kitchen, so we've got new kitchen equipment. We also have kilns that'll be going in the, the art room areas. Case work and science case work, we are doing some areas of the science to get those epoxy tops, so you'll see that, as well as the, the plastic laminated case work, the wood case work throughout. There's some examples of that as well. And then as far as the mechanical systems, we're going to be tying into what we did in Phase One. And when this phase is done, we'll have the opportunity to balance the system and commission the system, because there'll be, the tie-ins will now occur, and we'll be able to have that, the system operating as, as designed, and getting that efficiency that, that is part of the design. So, all of that will continue. Some pictures here of some of the work. Some of it was obviously eventually covered, you know, with, with the, with finished ceilings, but these are, these are the, you know, the, the pipe runs and the duct work and, and the equipment throughout that we put into Phase One. Plumbing, we'll have a grease interceptor in this phase because of the, the kitchen work that we're doing. There's also a water meter vault that has been, been added as well. And some rough-in work of some of the, the plumbing that we did in the first phase. Fire protection, to note here, we are doing fire protection throughout, with the exception of the areas that we're not renovating. And there was a domino effect to that, and that's why this, this particular carve-out of Phase Two worked, worked very well for, for budgetary reasons. And just some underground work that was done for the new fire line in Phase One. And then electrical systems, obviously, continue with that throughout the building, the light fixtures, generator. And it is, again, noting that all of the fire alarm systems throughout the entire building will be updated through this, this particular phase. And you can see some, some pictures of some of the conduit and the new runs that we, we did, as well as the light fixtures in the hallways, some of the, the interesting light fixtures that are, that are identified there as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle to talk a little bit about the phasing plan.
Okay, so we were able to work with the district and come up with a new phasing plan. So, we are going to start in the areas right now that have been moved out already. So, that is the first area that we'll get into, which is the arts and tech ed on the first floor, and I believe what is the seventh grade on the second floor. So, that's where we will start June. We started talking about maybe starting a little earlier, since the areas are already moved out, so we'll get a jump on that if we can. That will go till December, to the end of the year. A lot of that has to do with the equipment and the timeframe in which to get electrical panels and the HVAC equipment. After that area is done, we'll turn it over, go to the, what is the eighth grade on the second floor, which is the red area. That will take us from January till June, and then as soon as school is out, is when the main ramp will come down and be put back in for the start of school, since that is the means of egress that we will need to have. So, that is what we will do then. Along with the cafeteria kitchen will be done over the complete summer, because that also is an area that you guys must have back for the start of school. And then, at the end, we will recondition the library, which are now temporary classrooms. We will put them back, take them out, and redo your library at that time, which will be from August till October. We have talked to Raquel. If she does have enough spaces, that is an area that we have potential to move up as well. So, but we'll kind of play that by ear.
Yeah, and through the discussions with Raquel, obviously, the, the phasing plan was altered a bit, extended a little, a little bit, but it also provides for less disruption to the educational function. So, I think we, we struck a happy medium there. Still have the productivity with the construction progress, but with, with minimal disruption. So, that has been finalized, I think, at this point with, with Raquel, so. So, as far as the costs are concerned, as, as I mentioned earlier, we are beneath the $24,200, which was kind of the, the budget for Phase Two. Rebid was $23,809,658. Phase One, as we've mentioned before, was $12,700. Soft costs and some of the, some of the information that's here was gathered through your business manager as well, so all of these numbers are informed with, as it related to some of the soft costs, and in addition to that, that the overall budget, as it related to interest earnings that have occurred, as well as bond proceeds, et cetera. So, so basically, through this Phase Two rebid, coming in at $23,800, the difference for this particular, you know, bond issue is about 1.1 million, close to 1.2 million, that the board can determine what to do with, you know, moving forward, whether it's some of the items from Phase Three or, or whatever. So, that is where we sit right now. I did want to comment that, you know, we did get a lot of bidder coverage. There, there's, there's, some of the bidders are anxious to hear what's going on, because they're holding off on bidding other work, because their bonding capacity will, will be filled up at that point. So, I think we hit, hopefully, the timing well here. We, as I mentioned before, there was, you know, material labor, labor prices, some went up, some went down. I think we were very fortunate, how, how things did come in. Mentioned about the schedule, and as far as next steps are concerned, if the board chooses to move forward, we would be looking at March 28th, the, the next board meeting. The business manager would, would advertise, put the 10-day notification in, 10 days prior to March 28th, and then we would be ready to start to procure and, and move things along. So, any, any questions?
I actually have a question on an update. I was in IMS on Wednesday night for basketball practice. Where are we with that elevator?
We're still waiting for the frame controller. It was April. It was about an eight-week lead at times. Elevator companies are notorious for using their own controller or their equipment, so we're pushing on them every day, but right now, we're...
I mean, it's, it, it's...
I know. Their issue, and they know it's their issue.
But it's also our issue, because we've got kids coming in and out of the doorways, and that's the doorway, and we've got temporary stuff up there now. I mean, it was, I, I can't imagine, we were there for two hours of basketball practice with them going in and out of the bathrooms. I can't imagine a full school day.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't go to anyone else, because that is a, their elevator, so unfortunately...
I just, my next comment is, we can't have this happen next summer.
Um, we will, trust me, they're already aware, so...
Okay. I mean, it can't happen. That is the main corridor for everything.
Can't happen, the other one, because that is your egress.
Correct.
Yeah, they're aware, and they're, they know how unhappy we are at this point that this took so long.
Okay.
So, I just had a question around the costs. You mentioned it came in, you know, lower than what we set the Phase Two target at. I, I had a concern when we set the Phase Two target, and we broke Phase Two into two, you know, Phase Two and Phase Three. You know, we, we delayed some pretty major projects, like the music wing, the auditorium, the gym, and I think we said it was worth $10 million at the time. To me, it seems like it's, if we were going to go out and do it as a Phase Three, we'd spend a lot more than $10 million, okay? Because there's a lot of square footage in those areas. So, my question is, how much of this is really cost coming down versus, you know, we're, we're still, I think, paying overall, if you look at the project in total, we're paying a premium? You know, how much of this is just the fact that we create a little bit more budget for Phase Two, because we only assigned $10 million to some very, very big projects in that school? I mean, help me understand the, the cost, and, you know, is it really good, or is it just, you know, is it only good because we decided to delay a very big part of the project?
No, I, I think it's relative to the market, and relative to what's, what's happening in our industry. We're still, we're still seeing bid results that are surprising, and, and when I say that, very high. And it's just, you know, what, what's happening in the construction industry, as we've talked before, it's, it's the cost of, of, you know, the supply chain that has occurred, some of the commodities that, that continue to increase. Again, you know, we, we competitively bid this, we, we push these contractors, we de-scope them, we, we negotiate it down. Believe me, we're, we're, we're working hard in those regards, because we, you know, it's not fun to, to report to a, to a client that things are going up. It's, it's been a tough, you know, tough several months here in, in that regard. So, you know, it's, it's a really good group of contractors. I won't comment on, on the elevator, but, but everybody else has really, you know, done a great job, and, and we've got almost all of the same cast of characters are, are here. So, I, I think when you, when you, when you speak of value, I, I think you're, you're going to get value. I think it's going to be a very good project. The market is, is, is what it is, and, and we've really done a, the best we can to try to, to try to keep it in bay, so.
For those Phase Three items, Mr. Christiansen, throw out a $10 million number. Would that be, I know, it's difficult, you didn't bid it out, you can't put a precise number on it. Would that be a rough order of magnitude estimate, where you'd see that falling?
Yeah, we, we were actually, we were, the first go-around, this was back in November or so, I think we were, we were around six, seven million dollars on that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and keep in mind, some of those are, they're, they're big boxes, so that's why, you know, you see a lot of square footage, but it might not relate to cost, you know, in the same way that you would, you know, classrooms and things of that nature. So...
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, that was good. That was a very thorough update, and thanks for providing all the slides also that we had in our packet. Thank you.
So, just as a point of clarification, then we'll have a motion on the agenda for March 28th to approve the guaranteed maximum price of Phase Two at the number you see there on the screen. That will then trigger the project to begin in Phase Two.
Okay.
Okay?
I guess just one other question. Did we chop off anything that would seem unnatural? You know, now that you are showing a $1.1 million, you know, surplus from what we financed for this project, is there anything that you would recommend adding back in? Because, you know, maybe, maybe it's going to cost us more to not do it, or it's going to cost us a lot more to do it later. Is there anything else that you would recommend bringing into scope? You don't have to answer now, but think about that.
We, and we've talked with Raquel, obviously, who has, has a great interest in, in the stuff of work here.
Yeah.
And, no, I'm sorry. Your principal, Raquel, has a great interest in, in, in that scope, and she has identified a few areas that would be her priority. One of the things to, to keep in mind is when, knowing that we weren't going to be moving into some of the Phase Three areas, and if, if they didn't occur for quite some time, we are doing some finishes leading into those, so there's going to be a natural progression, so it's not going to look like we just stopped somewhere. There's going to be a transition there that's going to be appealing.
Yeah.
So, that has been taken care of.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Dan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning somewhere.
Is this on? Yeah.
Just tested us, see if we're paying attention?
Some days, it feels like that, doesn't it? We will skip talking about, we don't have any elevators in this building, for sure, but that is a common problem these days. We're having trouble on a lot of jobs getting elevators done. I sympathize. So, just a brief update tonight. I threw a couple of slides in here just for fun at the beginning, because oftentimes, what we're doing, you guys see some of the end results, but you don't get to see the process. It's actually really interesting. At our office, it's a little bit like Pixar, because everything we do is in three dimensions, internally in the building. And so, I had Dan Dillow just shoot me a couple of images. That's why I was waiting to send the presentation this afternoon, just to strip away the roof to show you a little bit about what's going on. You know, there's structural engineering, mechanical engineering represented here, architecture and things like that. But this is just a view. The, the primary center or primary school playground is right in the outside area in front of us in this slide. And then, so this is the orientation of where we're at. You can see the two classroom wings there, and on the left-hand side is the entrance and so forth. The big boxes on top are the mechanical units, they're prepackaged units that are customized for the building. And then when you look a little bit closer, this is just the layering of what goes on with the structure and the duct work, and we're trying to work out, does everything fit? How do you get a round structure? How are things integrated? You can even see stairs, internal stair to get to a roof hatch in that image. And then, yes, we do have elevators. You can see the shaft up there.
In the previous, the first one, so I noticed you have some pretty tall piers there. Is that because of the, is that what the, the core samples?
Those are actually foundations, so we're integrate fully. So, those are, a portion of our building is on grade beams and caissons. And so, you can see that right there. You can see where they start on the left-hand sides, almost in the middle of the page. There's small caissons there. That is the D-mark line on our building site of where fill begins, and then where cut begins going to the left. So, we're cutting into the hillside for half of the building, and then we're pushing that earth over to fill the other half. And where we're filling is caissons and grade beams. And we're, we're lucky to not have to do that on the other side, so it's a less expensive foundation on the left-hand side of the building, on the cut side. So, it's kind of interesting. You can see the predicted depth of the caissons right now from the caisson schedule that the structural engineers are using, based on the geotechnical information that we just received from the report. So, all that information is starting to get into the design. So, it is kind of fun to see that. And then here's one last shot, just to strip down, I told Dan, you know, take out interior partitions, let's see what it looks like, because it's hard, you can't see through walls very easily. We do have some versions of transparencies, too. I'll show some of those as we go along further in the process, because I like them when they have cab, cabinetry and all sorts of things like that in there, which is also being put in. So, our guys, this is what they see, as we're flying around in the building, trying to find problems and, and design things. So, just a point of interest. So, update on where we are with approvals. Dr. Walsh wanted us to talk about that tonight. The MPDS approval, which is the DEP portion of our land development approval, we are expecting technical comments from DEP coming in very shortly. They've had the project for a while now, and we've had the discourse with them, and so we know this is coming. So, we're looking forward to that. I'm hoping this month, because the quicker we get it, the more we can turn it back and then advance to getting a full permit. There is a stream crossing waiver that we have submitted, and I thought it would be worthwhile to show this. So, this is our driveway from King School Road, entering King School Road. Oh, I'm sorry, is it easier this way? So, here's our driveway, here's King School Road, here's our driveway coming in. And this area right here is a wetlands area, and, and down here, there's a little wetlands, and then down further along on this sort of southern portion of the site. But you can see these little sort of offshoots. They look like little tiny cracks, but those are actually little tiny streams. It's basically the way the site drains through the property, and those feed into the wetlands that are down here in the southern portion. Well, you can see our road, this one stops right at the road. It actually starts right here, and so we are crossing it right there. And so, we've been working with Department of Environmental Protection to be able to cross that stream and put a culvert there. And there's a lot of rules that go in with that, the wider that you, they give you a, a width that you can disturb, and within that width, it becomes sort of a standard permit. And something anywhere of one foot beyond that width, it becomes a more complicated permitting process. So, we've elected for the standard, the faster permit process, and that also means that there will be outfalls that'll have a little retaining wall on this side of it, on the downstream side, and then on the upstream, sorry, I keep, I, I never know what to do with my back to everybody and to the audience, it's so difficult. So, this side is the downstream side, and so there will be a small retaining wall here, probably four or five feet, just guessing, but on the upward side, we have a deeper, a taller retaining wall. I think that one is at least 12 feet. It's, it's small in length, it's about as big as your table probably here, but that's as the water comes in, we manage the grading there and allow the stream to manage the stream level, but to get the road up above it so that the stream can go through. So, that has been submitted after much conversation back and forth with DEP.
Dan, quick question while you're still on that slide.
Yeah.
Not quite related, but I know previously you had talked about there being a walking path kind of through that parking lot that leads into the main entrance, correct?
Yes.
Does that, is there a sidewalk that extends all the way out to King School Road planned at this time?
There is.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, you can't really see it, this is too small, but there is a sidewalk that goes all the way out to the King School Road.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, we've a lot of conversation about traffic over the last so many months. The traffic study was completed. We did review that with the municipality and their traffic engineer, and it has been officially submitted. And that went along with the land development submission that was submitted this week. I'll jump over to the land development, because it's apropos. With the land development, the traffic's report was submitted, and also the geotechnical report was submitted, and our first planning commission meeting, technically, our second, we did a preliminary introduction of the project to the planning commission this last month. And so now, there'll actually be a review meeting, there'll be a workshop on the project coming on March 29th, and then subsequently, another meeting on April 12th. We possibly could get a conditional approval on April 12th. If not, it'll go to the next month, depending upon what kind of comments and interaction that there are. And so far, I can't say enough about working with the municipality. They've been extremely helpful and interactive, just a great group of people and professionals. Sewer Authority has completed their flow monitoring. We got a letter today stating that they, the system overlooked a, a couple of manholes, that they now have to go back and do counts at those manholes. And so, we'll have a little bit longer before they're able to do their final assessment of the flow. They, they had told us sometime in April or May, after they get the, the letter... letter said that after they get the additional manholes covered, um, that it would be a 12 weeks or less before they would have their final assessment. That assessment is, I think, them working with DEP to make a recommendation as to how we're going to manage sewage on the property. Um, so that, it generally fits within the timeline. Um, might be a few weeks beyond, but overall, I think we're in the window, uh, of what we originally, uh, this last meeting we talked about. Um...
Oh, hey, Dan.
Yes.
I just want to make one comment, actually, on the previous bullet on traffic. One thing that was pointed out at the planning commission meeting last month, I thought was simple, and so simple, we should have asked the question before, but I think it was Adam Foot had asked, "How many additional buses, you know, related to traffic are going to be going into NAMs than they, than are already today?" And what was the number, about 10 more buses? 20 more?
Yeah, I'm sure.
No, it's, well, it'll be 50. Okay. So it's, I mean, it's more, but it's, it's not, like, going from zero to 50. I mean, we're already putting 30 in there every morning.
Correct. Yeah. It, it seems like a lot when you just look at the building by itself and pretend like it's brand new, but there is a whole thing going on here right now.
Yeah.
I have a question while we're still talking about traffic, but it might be more for Dr. Walsh. Um, the traffic study, is that our study or the municipality's study? And is it public? If someone wanted to see it, would they come to us, go to the municipality? How would they do that?
So the, it, it was produced by the engineers. It was presented to the district and the municipality, and, um, the municipality gets a chance to comment on it and provide feedback before it becomes our public document. So I think we're at that point now. We're waiting for that comment or feedback.
Thank you so much, Dr. Walsh.
Yeah, and you did pay for it. Just saying. Uh, so technically, they work for you, but they're in, pretty independent. Um, one other thing that's going on, uh, currently right now are, uh, we're trying to work out the utility connections to the building. Uh, that's a long process, working with utility companies. Um, and, uh, uh, there's a meeting next week after having some preliminary conversation with Columbia Gas, uh, on the gas routing, uh, for, uh, for our new building and maybe where the best place to connect is. We're trying to work with them to see what is the least expensive methodology to be able to heat the building. Um, and along the same lines, the same thing's happening with waterline. Um, and, uh, Maserro is actually doing a pricing options for us on waterline op, options. Um, and we're looking at a way, if we could possibly somehow manage trenching waterline and gas line adjacent or together, uh, to save money, that might be a possibility, too. So between those two things, there, we'll figure out what the best routes are to go and report back to you. Um, so, uh, moving along, uh, I think, pretty well, uh, and we're getting, it's been good feedback. Uh, sometimes it's hard to get good information, but so far, um, everybody in the process is working well together. Um, uh, things coming up, uh, cost estimating, uh, this month, we complete our design development set of documents that goes to Maserro, and then Maserro will start their, uh, design development estimate, which is the one we're really waiting for, so that we can react to it, um, even though we are trying to take cost considerations, working with administration, um, to do some of those changes, uh, ahead of time, so that when we get the costs, we believe they are inclusive of those things and we can be more accurate. Um, one of the things are, uh, restrooms in, on the ground floor of the building, the kindergarten or first grade, we had, um, developed a plan with restroom, a restroom for each one of those classrooms. Um, and then at one of our sessions, and I think I talked about it last month, we decided to try to minimize the number of restrooms that we were putting on that floor. So we developed a plan where two classrooms share a restroom. So everybody still gets a restroom, they just get to share it. Um, and, uh, so that is currently being drawn right now. Uh, Cassie and I worked out how that would all function, and I think it's going to be successful, and then we'll be reviewing that with administration before we, I didn't want to show anything today, because I, I'd like to review it properly before we go public. Um, but that was a huge change for us. We had to redesign the whole ground floor. Um, so, uh, I'm hoping that it, we did everything in the right direction. It also gave us some other, some new opportunities, too, uh, in the arrangement of space that we'll talk about, uh, at our next meeting. Um, Act 34 hearing is a, a big thing on my plate to watch out for. Uh, I, I think I mentioned about begin, uh, beginning to start the booklet, um, which is a key, uh, portion of that process. I did start the booklet. I'll be working with Doug, uh, in the coming weeks to try to format the booklet, um, and get it prefinalized. The, the real issue is that we have to have the cost estimate. You can't go backwards. Once you approve the cost for the Act 34, I mean, you could go back, I guess you could do, approve them twice if they changed, but I wouldn't want that for you. Um, the booklet has the maximum not to exceed cost for the project in it, and so you want to be confident that you're not going to go over a certain amount with, you know, they give you so, a little bit of leeway, but i- in general, I like to be as accurate as possible. So, so we only have to have one hearing. I don't want to have a second hearing after we open the bids. Um, it's just a hassle. Um, so, uh, that'll be preliminarily done, and we'll work through when the dates are, for the hearing are best to be had. Uh, and Dr. Walsh will have to talk to you guys about that. But it really, we need the estimate first, uh, so that we can ha- haggle through all of that and then put the final numbers inside there. And then Doug reacts to that with financing. Um, so there's this linear kind of thing that goes on. But there's a lot to do in the booklet. I already wrote all the educational stuff for you, uh, based, I, I know you so well now. Um, I, I gave a pretty good shot at it, so that'll be coming to you for a draft, uh, to review.
Roughly, when do you think we're going to have that, uh, Act 34?
I was shooting for June. I was hoping that we could do it in June. I'd like to get it done before you go for July break, and just not to have a meeting like that in July and, uh, let you have a nice summer. Um, but there's a lot of things that have to happen and set up. Um, there's a 20-day waiting period, once you've advertised and things like that, um, uh, that we want to comply with everything. So, uh, we've done this a lot, and so I, I'm, I'll tell you when we're getting close to danger on a schedule, um, like that. But I think June would be the latest. My last schedule had it. Um, I think we were doing it in May. So, um, we have a little bit of leeway. Um, that was pretty much it. Uh, our other activities, I, the set, schedule's the same as it was at the last meeting. Nothing has changed. We're still in that approval process zone that we talked about. Uh, I didn't change a, a thing. Um, we're, we're, I feel like we're a little bit behind in our second meet, our final meetings with teachers, but there's so many more important things going on. Uh, one of the things that Dr. Walsh wanted to point out tonight is that we are going through an active process right now on designing for stream in the building innovation space. And, uh, Cassie and the group were over here working, uh, with administration last week, going through, um, options for those rooms, and trying to envision what a new program would be like in that space and how flexible we could make the room. It's been designed four different ways over the last three months, and I think we're down for the stream rooms themselves into a hyper-flexible format, where we have a big open space with, uh, needed utilities like sinks and things like that and storage, but a lots of, a lot of movable storage and movable furniture and things like that, so that it, it can be anything that it wants to be in the future. Um, at this level, K5, it's a lot, a lot different than it is at middle school and high school. Or middle school and high school, we've got CNC machines, and we've got all those kinds of things that are happening. You have a little bit of that here, um, but the kinds of projects are much smaller, and, um, there's a lot of lessons learned kind of, uh, curriculum that's going on, um, step by step. Learn how to do a little bit of electronics. It's a small thing, and so on and so forth. So the rooms look a little bit different. And so how to make the room be adventurous, uh, and, um, and give the teachers the maximum amount of flexibility, and then, um, give the students a lot of opportunity to be able to work, uh, day after day on projects, uh, that may be larger or smaller or team-oriented. Um, so trying to, we're, try to get there, it looks different in every district. So trying to get there with your group is our goal. Uh, and that translates into some finished product in the library as well, in the media center, uh, the big one, uh, uh, on the third floor, the second floor. And, um, so some of that conversation you'll see showing up there. And we've been talking a lot about what the, uh, three-dimensionality of the room would be like and things like that. So, um, that is, we just had those meetings, so now that's starting to be plugged into the model and, uh, trying to create what a space like that would be. You'll, you'll see that very shortly. Any questions about that or any other program items? Um, I mentioned next steps with the stream here, um, and then revisions of the floor plans, uh, uh, on that ground floor. And then there are targeted rent, targeted, uh, areas where we've been constantly improving and modifying, uh, as we go along and inputting, um, staff information into the design. Uh, I think next month will probably be a pretty good plan review time, uh, if we can have the time on the agenda. I would say it might take a little bit of time to go through all the spaces, but it, it's about time that I think we have an overall, "Hey, this is where we've gotten after all of these meetings," um, if that makes sense. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, these are, um, good updates, and I don't know, I think you've been keeping us, uh, very, very abreast of what's going on, so thank you. Are there any public comments on, uh, agenda items? No? Okay. Mr. Grisbeck, can you take, um, I guess it's just the first two items in finance, and then is, uh, Ms. McCoslin going to join us, or are you going to walk us through the budget?
I'll just, yeah.
Okay, okay. So could you take items number one and two, then?
Sure thing. Two items tonight under finance committee agenda that are up for a vote. Item number one, approval of change order for the bus garage project. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the change order for the bus garage project as listed below. Change order E1 to A1 Electric, Inc., in the amount of $1,763.43. And the second item we have is payment for Independence Middle School Phase 1 renovations. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to retroactively approve payment for invoice to SiteLogic Energy Services, Inc., for a total of $307,848 for the Phase 1 Giza Project renovations at Independence Middle School. The funds will be paid from Construction Fund 31. I move to approve items one and two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question on number one. Um, why are we getting a change order now when the, um, bus garage is, like, done, minus some minor things in the spring?
This is a change order to move the card reader to open and close the gate to the other side. Uh, we determined it wasn't going to work out as you pull into the driveway on the left-hand side. It was actually impeding South Hills movers, it's right behind their building. Uh, so it's going to work out. We're going to move it to the right-hand side, uh, which is where you would exit a bus anyways. They swipe in, the gate opens, and they come, they drive the bus in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Voting is open. Motion passes 9-0.
Wow, that was, did good. Doug might be out of a job.
You're only giving me one, right?
Hell, yeah. Thank you.
He's been practicing for hours.
Yeah.
So there are two, um, of the monthly reports at your desks. They are also available for public to see on board docs. Uh, there's Fund 31 from the general fund, which is the, the fund that maintains the money for the IMS project, started back in, uh, May of '22, when the board encumbered the, uh, bonds to begin the project. And you'll see each month how much has been expended, uh, through Phase 1 and into, now we're ready to start here in, um, April. We're starting C funds being expended for Phase 2 of the project. Uh, the, the fund is actually north of the original borrowing because of the interest earned on those dollars as, uh, as we, as we're not using them. So we'll be at, well, I, what you saw, SiteLogic's price quote includes some of those additional revenues, um, uh, interest-bearing revenue. In other words, the surplus difference between the projected cost and the actual cost wasn't 1.1 million, because it also includes the interest we've been earning and will earn through that, through the balance of the next year. The second fund for you is Fund 32, which is our capital reserve fund for capital projects. Uh, and you'll see back through '22, Ju- July of '22, this fiscal year, what's been spent on capital projects, uh, through both bus garage and architectural services for the, uh, elementary project, uh, and particular, some particular fees that we've had to pay in advance, uh, for different studies and so forth. Our intentions would be then, when the borrowing occurs for the elementary project, we would reimburse this fund for anything that was expended on, uh, on the elementary's behalf. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comments on anything else related to school business? Okay, board comments. Anybody have anything to share?
Um, it starts in 16 minutes, but the JV hockey team for Bethel Park is in the playoffs against Central Catholic at Ice Castle in Castle Shannon. In 15 minutes.
I just, I wanted to say something about Bachi. It was awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Because it happened, I mean, we haven't had a meeting since, um, we went, and the kids, it's not even the win, the joy, like, oh my go, it was cool. Like, it was awesome. And, um, and I had a Hawks shirt on, under my Sharp Valley sweatshirt. I just want to say that.
We won, yeah. We put...
Yeah.
But again, we did skip all classes for the last month to prepare at Sharp Valley.
Yeah.
Not at Bethel, where our education matters more. Just kidding.
Well, you're sitting right next to one of the coaches, so, uh, nice job, Anthony. It, it was really good. I mean, it was...
I took a picture of the, the shirt, uh, the Hawks shirt underneath the Sharp Valley, and I sent it to Dr. Walsh. I said, "I'm an agent."
I also wanted to congratulate the Bachi team. That was an amazing run, and they certainly looked like everybody was having so much fun. And also, don't forget about the High School Musical, which starts tomorrow night. So check the website and see if you can find yourselves a ticket. You might be able to snag one. It's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. See you there.
Any other comments? No? Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was that opposed?
No.
Well, I'd like to go another 45, 50 minutes if we can.
Just hang on the line, Darren. Just hang on the line.
All right.
We'll leave it open for you.